See if, can you hear me okay? You can? Rush, can you hear me okay? Jim Butcher, okay? All right, we're gonna stay with my fashion statement. Say what? Are you waving to me? Oh, you want me to talk. Also, let's see what, if I stand up for the invocation. Can you hear me like this? Does that work? Yes, no, you want me to keep talking? How's that? Good, not good? Is he done? Yes, there we go, now it connected. All right. We're going, call to order. This Bristol, Tennessee city called city council meeting of June 9th, 2020. Tara, would you please call the roll? Here?
Here.
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 Thank you. I want to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in our city government is greatly appreciated. This evening's agenda includes two public hearings related to the adoption of bud- budget ordinances, under considerate, budget ordinances. The hearings provide the public on, and op- they provide the public an opportunity to offer comment prior to the city council's consideration of the ordinances for final adoptions. We ask that comments during the public hearing be related to the matter for which the public hearing is being held. As we go forward on tonight's agenda, I'll note each time that public comment is welcomed. For our invocation and pledge, I will provide the invocation and Vice Mayor Malin Luttrell will do the pledge. And for, for the invocation, I'm gonna read a poem from our daughter. But if everyone can stand. To begin with, I would ask for us all to have a moment of silence. This weekend, we lost one of our family members, Lieutenant Keith Feathers, at, to a heart attack. He's, was loved by very many people in our community and certainly loved by his family here. So if we can take a moment in prayer for Keith Feathers and his family. Thank you. So tonight, today is our daughter's birthday. She works for North Carolina Extension Services and Wake County. She posted this morning on Facebook for her birthday, a poem followed with information about a webinar. I'd like to read it tonight. Those who, this is from our daughter. "Those who know me well know I am not one to shout my feelings or opinions from the rooftops, but I prefer one-on-one conversations to social media. But today is my 34th birthday. I'm sharing a poem to invite any white friends who may be feeling uncomfortable or unsure what to do to join me in this work, to move beyond social media to listening, learning, doing, and undoing. I'm here if you need to ask questions, process, or get unstuck. Let's work together to build a more beautiful world." Her poem. "In lieu of presents, I've reached that age in life where no one really asks, 'What do you want for your birthday?'" Not that I want to be asked, I mean, if I were, what would I say? "Oh, no, that's quite all right, don't worry about me, I have all that I need." But see, that's the problem, isn't it? I have what I need to live. But what about those who've died or those who've been broken down by broken-down systems years upon hundreds of years? Well, broken for some, I suppose, but working just white, oops, I mean, right, for some people, like me. "Oh, sorry, where was I? Oh, right, what I want for my birthday? Presents, your presents. In the here and the now, in this moment we're in, I want, no, I need us to show up together, to do the hard work, to be in the struggle, to not always know what to do or to say, but to know we're in it together. Join me in this moment. Yes, in this movement for black lives, for black life, for liberty and justice for all. Your presence is a gift that only you can give, so why not give freely?" Thank you very much, and we're very proud of our daughter. Thank you. See you, Seaton. A pledge, sorry.
A pledge, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The first one is for ordinance 20-7, establishing the property tax rate, adoption of a budget, and appropriate funds for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Mr. Sora, would you summarize the matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be glad to. We're without our, our PowerPoint presentation as our computer has cho- has chosen and offered you time to, to update and restart, but I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and walk us through the, the essence of it. Or, ordinance 20-7 is considered this evening on second reading for the formal adoption of fiscal 21 budget and appropriation ordinance. This fiscal year begins July the 1st, 2020. Fiscal 21 budget totals $135,511,831. This reflects an increase of $14,453,299, or 11.9% from the fiscal 2020 budget. In addition, ordinance 20-7 establishes the property tax levy at the current rate of $2.16 per $100 of assessed value. The proposed budget maintains the current solid waste fees, stormwater fees, and water and sewer rates. Municipal government portion of the, of the budget totals $73,640,367 and reflects an increase of $11,627,875, or 18.8%. As, as this increase reflects, and as council has, has been made aware, we are in a COVID-19 period. The, the increase in this budget is directly related to the, to the refinancing or refunding of $9.7 million of general obligation bonds to save, to take advantage of lower interest rates over the remaining life of that particular bond. In addition, all capital equipment, as well as capital projects, are funded through grant proceeds, of which the city is only responsible for a portion of the 20% grant match. The proposed budget does focus on key themes of economic development, education, infrastructure, and public safety. The budget continues all city programs and services as in the past while making strategic capital investments to meet the future needs of our community. Major projects include the redevelopment of the 700 block of Shelby Street, reconstruction of East Cedar Street, relocation of a portion of Island Road, construction of sidewalks along Virginia Avenue from East Cedar Street to Hazelwood Street, and the design of sidewalks along Bluff City Highway from Lavender Lane to Tennessee High School. It also includes a re-improvements at the biosolids handling process at a wastewater treatment plant and the resurfacing of approximately 13 million miles of roadway. So as you can see, even then, the COVID period, this is not a standstill type of budget. We also have key partnerships in this budget. We have the continued funding for the Tri-City Airport Aerospace Park with that construction continuing and it's anticipated, in terms of the earthmoving work being complete late this fall. There's also site development in partnership with Bristol, Tennessee Essential Service and other partners for the Bristol Business Park and also with networks Sullivan Partnership with the expansion of Partnership Part II. The budget also includes a 1% cost of living increase for city employees. The school system portion of the budget totals $61,871,464 and reflects an increase of $2,824,424, or 4.8%. And this is lar- this increase is largely attributed to the transfer of funds and increased funding transferred from the school capital project, from the, yeah, to the School Capital Project Fund from the Sullivan County School Bond, Construction Bond issue in support of the new middle school construction. Ordinance 20-7 was approved on first reading at your June 2nd meeting and then formal consideration is later this evening.
Right. So for our public hearing, first off, I'll note, while we're having trouble with computer, if there's anybody here that wants to look on their phone or folks at home, that the website, bristleten.org, under transparency, I believe, are documents and that's where our budget can be found. I'm not sure if that's where the new budget is. Anyway, it's on our website for the in-depth and then it looks like we're gonna be up and running in a minute. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on our budget? If not, I do have a, I know several folks talked with several people and I was, I have a statement from Jerry Caldwell from Bristol Motor Speedway who had intended to be here tonight but was unable. And he asked if his comments could be shared during the public hearing. And his comments include, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau funding, he would like city council to seek input from community businesses and tourism attractions to ask what they see as value to them with the CBB efforts. For BMS, referring to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, for more, more information about other activities for race fans to do while they are here, is of great value to Bristol Motor Speedway. Jerry hopes that we, all parties, can sit down to talk about the value of tourism marketing and the CBB and what success looks like for each of us. He hopes that we can come together to find the best path forward. He thanks the council for the opportunity to share his thoughts. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to address council on the budget? Seeing no one? Oh, I forgot to hammer. Am I okay if I didn't hammer? Okay, our public hearing is closed on our budget. Next, we have ordinance 20-8. And the hearing is opened for that ordinance, amending the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Mr. Sora, can you summarize?
Yes, Mayor, we're glad to. This is our annual housekeeping measure in which we amend the fiscal 2020 appropriation and funds budget to address either increases in revenues or increases in expended years beyond those originally anticipated during the development of the budget this past year. There are six funds, and these are generally referred to as special revenue funds that, that will be addressed this evening. The first is the General Purpose School Fund. It is proposed to increase by $630,000 due to increased capital outlay and operating costs. The School Nutrition Fund is proposed to increase by approximately $140,000 to reflect additional operating costs. The Electronic Citation Fee Fund will increase by $3,875 to reflect additional revenues beyond those originally budgeted. The Solid Waste Fund is proposed to increase by $229,840 to reflect increased tipping fees associated with disposal costs as well as equipment repairs. The Debt Service Fund is amended to reflect the refunding of $6.7 million of general obligation bonds during fiscal 2020 to take advantage of lower interest rates. And the Capital Equipment Fund is proposed to increase by $96,450 to reflect the acquisition of the new stage for the downtown song. As I mentioned before, this is largely a housekeeping measure and keeps us in compliance with statutory requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Is there anyone here tonight with us who would like to address this item on our agenda? Seeing no one, then our public hearing is, on this issue is closed. Next is the consideration of ordinances and resolutions and we go to the adoption of our budget. And that is ordinance 20-7. And Mr. Sora has already summarized this. Do you want to say anything more, Mr. Sora, with any other?
Yeah, ma'am, I think my, my comments are complete.
Does any member of council have questions for staff?
Do we want to make a motion and take questions? I do have questions.
We don't usually, we do questions first.
All right. Would you mind, during the closing time period, we normally, I think, have first reading in May. And would you go through and is that gonna change transparency?
Yeah. Our, our normal budget calendar, and it started off as a normal ca- calendar this year. We would start with, with our retreat, with council and staff in January. This would be the day-long January work session in which we, we give a historical analysis of where revenues are at that point. We also review the CAFR from the previous year, so you have a year-end summation of, of 2019 revenues and expenditures. We also talk about what city council would like to see in terms of, of initiatives placed in, placed in our budget. And in February, we go through our annual capital improvement budget. In March, we typically would go through our goals and objectives. During that period of March, we were, we, we, we had, we had to revamp all of our thoughts in that and, and tried to pull together a budget that was more reflective of the fiscal realities, not knowing truly what those fiscal realities were gonna be. We used the best information that we could get from the Department of Revenue, from the state, and then also from the economic departments, from the University of Tennessee, who was also advising the governor's office during this time, of just what to expect, not only for the balance of 2020, but what we could look for in the first part of fiscal 2021. And, and in looking at those, we, we, we had to make some decisions to, to back off on some of the salary compensations that we had talked about in January, some of the capital programs that we had talked about in January. As I mentioned early on, capital equipment this year is strictly from, from the governor's fu- from the governor's grant, and that's in, in, in an amount of 600 and, almost 624,000. So all of our rolling stock replacement for, and that's eligible for public safety-type equipment, it's eligible for IT equipment. We also have proposed some, some general facility improvements such as an HVAC system at the city hall and the roof at, at the annex. All of these are funded now through that grant, so there's not a reliance on our, on our local dollars to do those. On the Capital Facilities Fund, and I, I, I talked about some, some major projects during the public hearing, during the, the portion of the public hearing to provide a brief overview, but the, many of those projects are either public-private funds, like the relocation of, of Island Road, for example. That's a joint venture between a private developer and the Tennessee Department of Transportation. The sidewalks on Virginia Avenue, that's a, that is through, the construction is funded by 80% through the Tennessee Department of Transportation. We're responsible for design and right-of-way and the 20% match. We will, we will be, we will get started on the Edgemont Avenue Bluff City Highway sidewalks this year, but that will be designed and right-of-way acquisition. But one, once, once we get into the construction element of that, we will be responsible for 20% of that. But those 20% contributions and the design for those projects, they come out of our fund balance, but the lion's share of our initiatives this year, we're, we have other, other dollars in play rather than local dollars. So, and then, then as we continue to, you good?
Well, I mean, I appreciate the detail, but I think the main thing that, I've had conversations with some folks, didn't really understand what we were doing. And honestly, you know, when it came down to it, but we would normally have had our first reading in May, second reading in June. And then, oh, we, we do an appropriation in July, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so, that's kind of, and I guess we'll, we still plan on doing that.
Yeah, your, your appropriation agreements will be on your July agenda, they will also be on your June 23rd work session, as you all will review those appropriation agreements in detail, and then they'll be placed on your, on your July 7th agenda for formal consideration. And by these appropriation agreements, your budget appropriation is tonight.
Yeah.
The appropriation agreement that I think you're talking about, it would be for nonprofits.
Well, I mean, overall, for the overall budget.
The overall budget is tonight.
I want folks to understand is we, we, the staff worked through this from January through basically April, and we, and you mentioned nonprofits just now, we have presentations for nonprofits, and we get presentations from our staff for, for different things in different departments. So normally, first reading's in May, second reading's in June, and our appropriation is in July. We'll still do the appropriation in July, but we had complications. Now, you mentioned nonprofits. Another question I had is, is what has been the general percentage that we have given to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Discover Bristol, over the years? Hasn't it been closer to 50%?
In our tenure, and I say the, the council and, and my role in, in this particular, in my role with the city in this, in this aspect, it's been right around the 50% mark. We've been, and that's buried, our, our, it's been in the 3.75 for several years, it went to 3.85, and then it went to 200,000. And our, our annual occupancy tax receipts have been somewhere from, say, 3.85 to 4.40 in terms of occupancy tax. And, and a lot of that has been, has been based on, we saw a, a, a nice uptick when Fairfield opened, for example, in occupancy tax. We also saw, saw a nice uptick at the Battle of Bristol with, with that additional weekend of lodging emphasis in our community. But generally speaking, 3.85 to 4.40 is, would be the range of occupancy tax. And we've been between 1.70, 1.70, 1.70 this current fiscal 2020. Prior to that, it's, it's been between 1.75 and 200.
And we, we don't know what our year-end, June 30th is gonna be at this point, we expect it to be down.
We project it to be in the range of $310,000.
Well, and I don't think that, you know, we, we have appropriated $124,000 for the CBB, and I don't know that that's wrong. We're gonna be down. You know, we, we think we're gonna be down. I just wanted to know, we have in our appropriation agreement for the CBB, we picked 40%, and I want to know why.
You'd have to ask your partners there.
Why wouldn't it be 50% as it has been, or let's say, up to 50% as it has been?
Why don't we, or maybe, do you have any other questions? Because we should move into discussion, I would think.
That's what I was trying to do?
Yeah.
Did you want to make a motion, or what did you want to do?
I think we're ready for a motion and then move into discussion, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 with making a motion is for, making a motion is for discussion, then we can go from there. Okay, do I have a motion to approve this budget?
That's okay.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second. Motion, a second. Okay, now, go ahead and you can ask.
We picked the 40% instead of 50%. Why did we pick, why did we do that?
Well, I guess from my standpoint of looking at, to come up with some type of percentage, I think is a way to do it, and I felt like if you look at, of the way that it continues to go down, the occupancy tax, if you look from, say, four years ago, five years ago, it continued, it's continued to go down. It was going down prior to COVID. And I feel that, I think 40%, considering our sister city gives 5, that us giving 40 is a good number. That was just my opinion of that.
Clear.
But I'm not sure how, I mean, because we're, I was trying to come up with a number, a dollar figure, and then started looking at, okay, let's just, if we do a percentage. I didn't realize that it has been 50%. I was trying to back in and came up with 4. I mean, I thought we, when we discussed this at our meeting, that we, and that's, that's how we came up with the 40 of backing into the, the dollar amount, is how the 40 came up, is the way I understood it.
Yeah, that's my recollection as well, that we got a dollar amount, that we just calculated what that percentage was based off of the, you know, estimated occupancy tax. That's how we came to that, that number.
Well, and I think for just a point of history is that we, when we were at 170 and 175, and Bill, you may need to refresh my memory a little bit, because it's been three or four years. And then we had, like, the Battle of Bristol, we had two years there back-to-back, I think, where it was 200, we were 400 and maybe a little bit nexus. And I know, Bill, you entered, you were the one that thought that, you know, if performance-based, that we were at 180, 185, and would be willing to go as high as 200 or 50% of the occupancy tax.
Up to 200,000.
Up to 200,000, I'm sorry, up to 200,000.
That's correct.
And so that was how we, we did that then, but I think to Dan's and Melon's point, this year, when we looked at it, occupancy tax was down, and we had, we had others that had needs that needed to come into the arena. But I do understand, you know, Believe in Bristol hasn't been cut from the 50,000. And I think the thinking behind our staying steady with Believe in Bristol at 50,000 is because they were cut to what by our sister? Y'all remember?
7,500.
7,500. And that was down from?
20,000.
20,000. So they were taken from 20,000 to 7,500. And so I think we thought that it was Believe in Bristol needed to survive, and we went too deep there. And then we had the same discussion about the Birthplace of Country Music, and it was at 30,000, and they were cut to $1,750.
Bristol, Virginia was given 30,000 originally?
We're, we're, we, how much did Bristol, Virginia give last year?
I think they gave to BCM 5,000 for fiscal 20, and then they dropped it to 1,700 or something like that this year.
It was 1,750. And so I think that was why, you know, as we cut everything else, we let them stand where they were, because they were taking such extreme cuts from Virginia. And, and really, I mean, they're both teetering, but, you know, if, if, it would seem more fair to, for them to take the 10% cut, you know, if it's, if it's what we need to do, if you believe that's what we need to do, then we need to address that. If, 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 if we're good to let them stand, I mean...
I guess what I, and if we can leave that for a second, but go back to the CVB just a second. So, Bill, do we know if, if they were funding at the 125 level to the CVB, and I'm talking about Bristol, Virginia, approximately what percentage of the occupancy tax would that have been for Bristol, Virginia?
You know, the, if you do the math, the occupancy tax is, is about $1.3 million in Bristol, Virginia. They have a 9% occupancy tax, and they have, they have a lot of hotels, but they have certainly more hotels than we do. So whatever the math is on, on $125,000 of that.
Is that about 10%?
10%.
Let's use that figure, 10%.
A little, a little less than 10.
So, I, I think that folks should know the history of this, just the recent history. I felt, and I believe most all felt, that the CVB should fund, be funded at about $350,000. And we were trying to get back to that level, which is where it was five years ago. And the discussion was about what percentage Bristol, Tennessee should pay versus Bristol, Virginia. Most of us felt it should be a 50-50 split, 175,000 each. I think Bristol, Virginia is wanting a similar to a 60-40 split. We covered 60, they covered 40. I was hoping for a compromise, maybe at 55 to 45. That's what I was pushing for. And I think everybody was kind of on the same page. Both councils were kind of on the same page of the amount of funding that they should get and how to fund it. And we were moving forward, of course, it was still negotiating, but I felt like people were kind of, most, both, both councils were kind of thinking the same way. So, that's the history, the recent history of how we, how we've gotten this. COVID hit, we know we're going to have to cut. We're going to have to cut basically everything. We basically have cut everything in the budget. And so, I want folks to understand that, but I guess my question goes back to, do all of us feel that it should be at 40%? Or I feel like we should give them up to 50%? And Bill has talked about two agreements. I want one agreement. I want one agreement between Bristol, Tennessee, Bristol, Virginia, and the CVB. And in that agreement, we all agree to give a percentage of our tax, our hotel taxes, whatever that comes out to be. And I think that's the way it needs to be handled. I'd like to see us go up to 50%. I would like for Bristol, Virginia to commit to a percentage of their tax. And again, this is, you know, a, a moving document. I'd just like to ask your consideration for that. For us to, to, to go up to 50% and ask Bristol, Virginia to go to 10%. I think we have appropriated 124,000. Melon, you look puzzled.
You said 10%.
For Bristol, Virginia. If, if that's about what they have been giving in the past.
Oh, okay, I, I, yeah.
In other words, we're, we're going by percentages, and whatever the numbers come out to be, the numbers come out to be. Now, we've got some stuff coming up in the future that could be huge. On their, on their side of town, the casino. It could be that they put a lot, a lot more money into this than what we do. I think our main problem is, is that we're giving a whole lot more money, but we're not getting the representation that we feel we should get. Is that fair to say?
Well, I think that, you know, we, we've, we've gone around about this for almost three years now, and this is the second consecutive year that we have found ourselves at this point, where we are constantly approached from different ones in the community that are directly related to one organization. And we don't have all the other nonprofits coming at us, and several of those nonprofits provide marketing dollars for us as well. And they have summarily been cut and cut and cut. And I don't think the problem, I think the problem is the inequity in the contribution, no doubt. When you've got Bristol, Virginia collecting 1.2 million or in excess of...
Right, right around 1.3.
And you have us collecting 300...
385 is what we collected at fiscal 2029.
But this past year...
We, we estimate that we'll end the year with around 310 this year.
With 310. And yet, we're giving 40% of 310, and we, we find ourselves here year after year because it's like, they're just, they throw such an arbitrary number out there. It's 50,000. And hey, if I can get this grant, it'll be that. And, and I get their, their financial position. I think that at this point, no, we, we haven't been given any opportunity for input really into the CVB. There is not a voting board that provides oversight to the director other than the chamber board, and we're the fiduciary stakeholder, along with Bristol, Virginia. We are the stewards of our people's money. And I think oftentimes, people think that we just, it's just, you know, whatever we throw in the wallet sticks, and there's our budget, but that's not it. We take all of this, and Chad, I know you do too, all five of us take this very seriously. We spend months studying this budget. If any entity, if the CVB were truly a department of the city, and it had shown a decline over three years, and did not provide the information that was requested by council repeatedly, there would be some real change to come to that department. We've been told over and over again that the CVB considers itself to be the marketing arm of both cities. We have given and given, we have asked to see the budget specifically in detail. We have asked to receive PowerPoint presentations that were shown, and oh yes, we'll get them to you after the fact. We have been asked to see the data points. How many times have you asked for data-related information? Every time we've met. I mean, facts are facts. And so now, we're at a juxtaposition where our sister, God love her heart, is still struggling with her finances. And I agree, that casino, it, it, maybe it could be a game changer for them. But what do we do in the meantime? Do we keep putting as the stewards of the people's money? We have benevolently given, we're not statutorily required to give anything to any of these nonprofits. There is no statutory law that says that we must contribute X number of dollars to anything. This is all benevolent money that is good stewards that have studied the budget, are giving or allocating on behalf of the people of Bristol, Tennessee, for the purpose of economic development as related to tourism. We're the birthplace of country music. Even before COVID, our occupancy tax was declining. We were still in conversation. I think that we have reached the time and the position where how much we give is a discussion, but what's done with it, once it's given, for me, is an absolute. There needs to be an autonomous board established that the director of the CVB answers to. That board is responsible for making its financial decisions. It's also responsible in reviewing the data points. It is responsible for empowering that director. We are the fiduciary stakeholders of the people of Bristol, Tennessee. To expect anything less at this point is irresponsible. We've given the money over and over and over again. We don't have the information that we've requested. Now, I don't know of any other department in the city that we would accept that from. We certainly wouldn't accept it from the safety departments. We wouldn't accept it from Parks and Rec. We wouldn't accept it from Public, Public Works. You know, and I really had hoped that we wouldn't get into this tonight, that we would get in, you know, have this discussion on the 23rd, or at the time when there was chamber representation, and there was representation from Bristol, Virginia. But the long story short is that for us to keep doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome is, it's insanity in its purest form, and we've done it. Now, perhaps if there had been that accountability all along, we might find ourselves in a different position. Of course, occupancy tax is down. This is a, this coming year is a prime opportunity while we know that that is down, or the expectation is that it's going to be down, that overnight travel, although traveling short distances, they say, could be up. But this is an opportune moment for us to take a look at that with representation from the chamber, with representation from our sister city. I just feel very compelled, you know, and I've thought a lot about this, I know there've been a lot of phone calls. We have each one gone to meet with chamber representatives over this very issue. And I asked the question when I had my meeting, how many of the Bristol, Virginia council representatives have been called to do this? None. Most recently, I believe, one of our council members asked the same question, how many of the Bristol, Virginia council members are being called under these circumstances and in this manner? How many did they tell you?
One.
Not one?
Just one.
One. So, year after year, we're laid on really hard over the finances of the CVB, and it's, give us the money, give us the money, give us the money. Come to a meeting once a quarter where the finances are not clearly laid out. There is no, no voting as to how it moves forward. We wouldn't, we wouldn't subject ourselves to that under any other circumstances. And so my question, we have representation on Believe in Bristol. We, and, and we vote. I'm on that board. We vote. We vote on, on budgets, we vote on whether or not certain events are going to take place. I also serve on the Birthplace of Country Music Board, and I serve on the Finance Committee there, and we vote. They're in the process of taking deep cuts, looking at maybe even furloughing people. And we go, we sit on these different boards that we give money to, for the most part, and we're engaged.
And you also sit on the CVB?
Yeah. And, and the chamber board.
For transparency.
And the chamber votes.
I sit on the CVB board, but we don't, we don't vote on anything. It is, it is simply, we go and we're told what has gone on, and, you know, there's, there's no, no clear path, you know, of involvement there. And the mayor and the city manager sit on the chamber board. The city manager sits, they both sit ex officio.
I'm a voting. There's ex officio, you have to define if that's voting or non-voting.
And so our mayor is an ex officio voting member. So, I mean, at what point do we hold our, do we hold ourselves, because this is on us? It's not on, this is not an issue now that's going to be on anybody else but us. Are we going to hold ourselves accountable to hold our fiduciary responsible accountable as it is benevolently shared throughout the community? And I, I think it's important that it is. So, you know, our sister keeps telling us that, that they don't have the money, and so, okay. What, what else can we do? We can't get blood out of a turnip. And, you know, right now, they, they seem to, to be in, in this position and in a quandary, and I, I genuinely feel for them. We're not in that position yet, but we've got to be very careful how we leverage ourselves.
Oh, let me, uh...
Yeah. And then if anybody...
Go ahead, please, anybody else.
I'm just saying if anybody else wants to speak, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, with regards to whether it's 40% or the 50%, you know, this year we're, that we're looking at. I mean, I, I could be okay with, with either one if it's the will of the council to say 50%, but we'll have to find out where we take that 10% back from somewhere else. And I do agree that at some point, we have to get in there... And I do agree that at some point, we have to get in there and, and have some oversight in this process. That, you know, we, we need to direct how we want to spend our money to a degree. And I think our sister city would, would want to do that as well.
That was the main thing I was asking about. Do, does anyone else feel that we could take it from the 40% to the 50%? It's relative. I mean, if we get folks in hotels and, and we get the taxes in.
Well, what about of instead of, at the 40%, I was just, I was looking here. Of, we're predicting 310,000, we're basing this on 310,000 up to 124,000 is the way the appropriation reads now. Am I correct? So if they increased occupancy in our hotels and it comes in at 400,000, that would be 160. So I would be of leaving, leaving it at the 40, but up to whatever they can bring in. I mean, so it's kinda if they are, if they are bringing in more occupancy tax, which is going down. What I have seen is it's continued to go down. So if they're bringing in more with a new director and with a director that is reporting to a board instead of basically, you know, we're giving money to the CBB. And then it's basically the Chamber Board is making the decisions. And that, I mean, of being new on council, I, when I first heard that, I, I really, it doesn't, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me of why at the end of the day, the Chamber Board would be making those decisions concerning CBB, because there is, the Chamber Director reports to the Chamber Board, so at the end of the day, the Chamber Board is making those, any decisions for the CBB. So if there is an increase in occupancy tax and not put a cap, I mean, listen. If they bring in a half a million dollars.
1% is 200,000.
What's that?
40% would be 200,000.
200,000. So, I mean, of, instead of putting a cap on it and, and of us going up and continuously picking up the slack and it being on our backs and our taxpayers' backs, why not put it, not give a cap? Because the way it reads now, it's up to 124,000. So if that money comes in, we're still gonna, we would have more money, we keep it at the 40% and then there, and it's also something to gauge.
It's performance-based.
Performance-based. I mean, do it.
Well, and to be fair, you know, with, with the whole thing about needing more money all the way through, if they're an entity, if they consider themselves to be a marketing part of the city, but yet they are an entity to the Chamber, the CBB has put through $22,000 a year to the Chamber Foundation. And they have said this year, after, after we met and after there was a request, they no longer.
They'll charge us rent.
Charge the 22, or take the $22,000, charge the 22 for rent. They said that they would be willing to consider dropping that this year. Well, the CBB has needed money every year for the past year that I've been on council. How much been, how much has been accrued as a pass-through to, from the CBB?
So, can I ask a question? Mr. Sora, are we getting into more discussion about the agreements that we could say for our work session?
I believe we are, Mayor. There's, there's, there's a couple of, couple of issues here. We, we, we need to resolve ordinance 20-7 in terms of approving a budget or not. If it is the desire to do, as Councilman Turner said, do 40% of whatever the number is. I think probably that conversation is better addressed in the, in our, in our, during our work session on the 23rd as, as, as you craft the exact wording that you'd like to have in the appropriation agreement.
I mean, I agree with that, and I, I didn't want, I didn't want to get into it in depth either. But a simple question. You know, where did we come up to 40%? We've been doing about 50%. I asked that we consider to go to 50%, up to 50%. And I don't know that necessarily needs to be capped. But I, I just think we need to consider that, so I ask for everybody to consider that. And about the budget, I also, you mentioned financials a few minutes ago, and it's very true. I'm disappointed in all the financials that we got from all of these groups. All of them were from 2018. I don't have to have them audited. I'd like to have up to 2019 and first quarter of 2020.
I don't think we asked people for that.
Well, we should.
Right.
We should be asking people for that. We should need the most accurate financial statements we can possibly get.
We asked for an audited statement, I think is what we asked for, so they gave us what we asked for.
Well, we're talking about the budget, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing some stuff out here. We should get the most accurate and up-to-date financials, audited or un-audited, that we should get from everybody.
Right.
That makes sense, doesn't it? Not 2018.
Right.
In the budget, I am glad that we got a 1% raise and we found a way to give our employees a 1% raise. That was very important to me that we do that. You know, we're talking about a funding agreement. I think we need to be thinking about a funding agreement that has fair representation for all of these groups. The Birthplace of Country Music, the, I Believe in Bristol, the Library, whomever else may come into that. I think we need to consider that. It's a fair question to ask if we're gonna go that, if we're gonna go that route. And I think, I think very difficult. Well, the makeup, I think this is probably for a latter, latter day. But if I.
I'm just curious, are you saying we need greater representation than what we have now on all these boards? Because we have representation on most all of these groups.
And the library, we appoint them.
I don't, I don't know what the representation, so if we're, if we're saying that we want a board makeup for the CBB that is representative to really what the money that comes from each city is, in this point, 124,000 dollars from Tennessee, 150,000 dollars from Bristol, Virginia. I think what we're saying is we want fair representation. Is, is that not what we're trying for?
On that board?
On that board.
That's also.
I'm saying that should be happening on all the boards.
We'll look at it.
Well, okay, I'm just.
Well, my, the only thing that I would say to that is that we're talking about the CBB as a marketing entity of economic development and the others are not. That is not their primary focus. The others have, have, while they may market, that is not, they are not, their primary focus is not to market only for the city.
I believe in Bristol is.
Well, it's to, it is to develop and market downtown specifically, yeah.
Yeah, and I think all of them market our city. But anyway, something to think about. Let me, let me finish out, because Jerry Caldwell asked you to say something. I have had conversations with CBB, and this has gone over the last couple of three years, about a completely new funding mechanism that includes the cities, but it also includes stakeholders, private businesses that are within this area, within the tourism area, our hoteliers, all of those involved. So I think this, the city, our city council has come up with something. I don't necessarily agree with all of it, but I do see the points in it. And I think everybody's made good comments about it. But I would like to see what they come up, they see, they know the problems. We've all talked to them. They know the problems. They know what we're after. Let's see what they come up with and move forward in an open-minded way concerning this.
And to that, I would just say that we've, we have, we will continue to. We've been open-minded for three years, waiting on this new funding mechanism to be put into place. And it's interesting that now that, that we have discussed a funding mechanism of our own, that now everybody seems ready to act. And I think that's a real positive to the whole situation. I guess my only interesting thought is that it's taken three years to get to this point.
Well, I only discussed it last year, so I, I don't know about three years ago, and I don't think it's been out there for three years, but.
Well, you just said it.
I haven't been talking to.
You just said it was three years.
I said it's been several years, yeah. Last year and this year.
A couple of things. One is, y'all have talked about it. I think it'd be great if we could get together with the three entities as soon as possible. So if it's okay with y'all for us to start figuring that out and come back with a plan to do that.
I think to have something in place by July 1st.
So, okay. And then the other, just to say that the model with the, with the Advisory Board and the Chamber is not, it's a model that's used other places for other things. So it's not a model that's never used. And I think, I have not served on the CBB for a while. I think part of it is, even if you use that model, how can you engage the folks? Do you have the right people at the table for the CBB? And how are they engaged? So that they do participate in, even if they're not making final decisions, they're participating in arriving at those decisions. So I think that's part of it.
And I do think that there are someone staff that have already begun to research and take a look at all the different types of models and that there are other models out there very similar to what we've described that have been very successful in other areas. So I applaud that. I think it's great to talk about.
So that ought to be part of our discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay. I have one other thing. Anybody else have other?
Well, I guess the only thing I will say of to keep in mind that our budget in the, of going through, and I brought this up in our work session, that can be amended during the year. So it's not that, I mean, we do not have to change anything in it at this point. And then once there is some type of agreement reached, then there can be changes. So
Well, we, we have, we have given one deadline, time deadline to the CBB to have this resolved in three months. And I think we said it could go to the start of the third, excuse me, start of the fourth quarter. Which I want it to be done as soon as possible too, but I think we put in their appropriation that we want this done in, was it three months or did we give a time?
There's, you, you will be reviewing that appropriation agreement on the 23rd. But my interpretation, and I think other staff's interpretation of what you all, the directive that you all had from your budget work session was that the structure of, of the tourism marketing organization would be defined during the first quarter of the fiscal '21. So that would be by the end of September 30th, 2020, this new entity or this restructured board would be in place.
An ultimatum. Let's get it done. Or it's gonna continue at that lower rate.
Well, also just a reminder that we don't like mandates. So, yeah, I think the sooner we can talk together so we can get on, can get on the same page as much as possible. One other question, I, it was my understanding that for Theater Bristol, we put in 25,000 at the last minute? Do you remember 20? Okay, 20. Never mind.
And that's coming out of council's budget as a one-time, as a one-time thing. It shouldn't be.
As a capital.
Yes.
As a capital.
As a one-time, yeah.
So, all right. Any further discussion? And we all just say thank you to all the staff for all the work that goes into it throughout the year, particularly this year for changing things. Thank you, Tara. Thank you, Mr. Sora, everybody else who had to keep going back to their budgets. Our school folks are here. Becky Adams, thank you for, I know you've been doing the same thing with trying to figure it out. Mr. Butcher, glad to see you here, and we thank you very much. Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second. If we're done, then Tara, you're ready to call the roll.
Firerow?
Yes.
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Leftrow?
Yes.
Turn.
Yes.
Great. Next, we have the ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds for the, that's to end up with corrections for our 2019, 2020 budget. We've already had the summary. This is housekeeping to make everything align at the end of the year. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Firerow?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Leftrow?
Yes.
Turn.
Yes.
Okay, next we have a resolution 2040 confirming the intent to contribute funds to the construction of the new middle school. Mr. Sora, can you tell us why this is on our agenda?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. As you may recall from our business meeting on June 2nd, the, the issue was, or the concern came up that an earlier resolution, actually Resolution 1896, that previously addressed the, addressed the funding contribution on the city's behalf for the new middle school, that there was, I guess it lacked some clarity as, as to exactly what city council had committed to. So Resolution 2040 provides that clarity. It formally pleases city council's commitment of two and a half million dollars to the construction of the city's new middle school. The estimated cost of the new middle, middle school, including site acquisition, design and construction totals $36,127,032. Approximately $27 million is available from the city's portion of the proceeds available for the Sullivan County School Construction Bond. As per discussions in 2018 with the, with the Board of Education, there was a desire by city council to contribute an additional two and a half million dollars to the construction of the new, new middle school. Resolution 2040 solidifies, clarifies that contribution and formally repeals Resolution 1896 that had some, that had some lack of clarity or some ambiguity in that resolution.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Sora? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2040.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion from council?
Just glad for the clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll say thanks to all my council members as well for making sure that the school system's clear, that we're on our intent, and so thanks for that.
Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on this? Seeing none, and I'll just add that we, this is a council which, every council I've served on has put education high on the list. This certainly is a council that definitely does that, so we support our schools. We're excited about our middle school and appreciate everything that's going into making the best education environment for our students, whether it's in class or as we have had out of class. Okay, Tara, we're ready?
Firerow?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Yes.
Leftrow?
Yes.
Turn.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Sora, do you have anything to add tonight?
Just a couple of reminders. We've alluded to our, our work session on the, on the 23rd, that will be a live work session. I think though, so that we can successfully practice social distancing, we will use the Slater Center Cafeteria that, that we've used for our meeting last week. I think that will work out better for us to meet there than in, than in the annex where we have a much smaller group.
So can I ask you about, is, is everybody want to go live with it? Is there anybody that likes the Zoom-type services? Is there a reason that we need to go live with it?
I think there's enough moving parts as we get into the appropriation agreements. It's, it's, I think it's easier to meet face-to-face for those discussions.
I would like.
Much like our budget meeting was, was easier to do.
I know that our, and I'm fine with that. That's fine, we can do that.
Maybe this one, but I mean, I would like to, where we could consider possibly some of the others where.
I, I think the governor's allowing us to do this through the end of June. If it's not extended, we no longer have permission to do it.
June 30th presently at sunset, so on June 30th.
So that's a good clarification. I wanted to know, our work sessions are within that same, I know that our city council meetings, so our work sessions have to be live as well?
No, they don't have to be.
They will after the 30th, yes.
They will after the 30th, yes.
All our cities need.
So they have to be after the 30th.
You can have work sessions or meetings in, in a virtual format through June 30th.
Unless it's extended, which we don't, you know, if our numbers keep going up, it may be extended, or state numbers.
But in essence, there's no difference in our normal city council meetings versus our work sessions. They need to be live after June 30th.
That's correct.
As far as we know.
That is correct. That is correct.
Yeah. I think saying in person makes it clearer. Also, to say live work session, I will say after seven hours, I felt pretty dead. So, I no longer felt like it was a live work session on Monday last week, so, anyway. Bill's not laughing.
Also, I do have, do have one other reminder, though. On Thursday, June twenty-fifth at noon in the beach house at Steel Creek, we will have our residential incentives, I guess symposium for lack of a better word, where, where for area contractors and real estate agents and some of the things. But we, we want feedback from them as to, are there, are there obstacles that they see in, in residential development here? And if so, what are they, and how can we remedy those? We also want to review our current buffet of incentives that are there, as well as detailed vacant property, both in, inside our corporate limits and then outside of our corporate limits, but, but what might, but perhaps in close proximity to, to sanitary sewer and which annexation could be requested.
And that dates what?
That's Thursday, the twenty-fifth at noon.
June twenty-fifth?
June twenty-fifth, and it will be in the beach house at Steel Creek.
Do, we, we had talked about, maybe I missed this, we had talked about putting out our res, our, our housing plan, then talking with them, are we, have we, I mean, we haven't changed any of our codes or anything like that at this point.
Nothing with that. What, I think the, the residential incentives has been an ongoing dialogue, and it also will be on our agenda for our work session on the twenty-third. But that's, continues to be a work, a work in progress and, and a dialogue with council and amongst council as to, as to the, the process and how to proceed forward with enhancing some of those incentives. But this meeting on the twenty-fifth is just to have that conversation, solicit input from the, from, from the residential developers as to, as to things that they see that we might need, need to revisit or want to visit in the coming months as we continue this process to, to try to stimulate housing construction in our community.
After we have our housing plan, I hope we do come up with another meeting. After we come up with our housing plan, I hope we do another meeting this year.
Yeah, especially as it, as it, as it changes and evolves, we'll want to do that. We have, we have not had in, in, really in the last year, maybe a year and a half, a meeting with our, our residential contact, contractors. It's time to do that. And also, I think as, as this council reviews our, our building codes and things of that nature, it's important to get that input from them as, as you move forward in, in, in the development or amendments to our building code.
Right. Council comments?
I'll, I'll go. Just to be clear, I think this whole council, myself particularly, fully supports tourism in Bristol. We recognize it as the economic engine that it is. For me personally, I just want us to build the best possible opportunity to facilitate tourism throughout the state, throughout the nation, and globally. We have a, we have a global story to tell. And I agree with Mr. Caldwell in that we have got to determine how we are going to build the best organization that we can, that's accountable and transparent to move our community forward through economic development based on tourism. I'd also like to congratulate the school on a beautiful facility. Dr. Tudor did a presentation for Rotary today, it was simply outstanding. And to Lieutenant Feather's family, my heart goes out. He's such a great officer and meant so much to all of us here in the Bristol community. Our heart breaks with his family and, and with our safety departments.
Okay. Anybody else?
Actually, just got a quick question. I was asked today that there, if there was a June twenty-third meeting about the trails, about the trail system that we've been talking about, is that not the case?
Not, not with this body, I, I don't, is there anything out of proportion?
Do we have anything scheduled with residents in that area along Volunteer Parkway?
No, we do not.
Okay.
And, and we, we do need to address that and, and invite our consultant back, the, the same one that, that, that participated in a work session with you all, from a virtual standpoint. But we need to get past, we, we would like to have a large gathering for that presentation, so we need to get past, so we need to get into phase three.
I guess, and that will be where we will invite residents, especially property owners that are close by and...
I got the same question today, it's, it's interesting that, I, I was asked the same thing to someone.
There's, there's an old saying that a good rumor will get you through the week.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, I'll just wish everybody the best. I want to thank all our city folks for doing what they do and serving the public, and that's serving us all, and appreciate you, appreciate our citizens, and we'll call it adjourned. Thank you.